Okay, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:08. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Alred.
Here.
Mr. Andreessen. Bill. Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Ms. McFarlane. Rose.
Here.
Ms. Sims.
Here.
Ms. Yu.
Here.
All right, it looks like we have a quorum. Any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, approval of the minutes, approval of the minutes from the November 7th regular meeting of the Plan Commission. Are there any comments on the minutes from that meeting? Want to make a motion? So we have a motion by Mr. Rose. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopkins. Any discussion of the minutes, any changes? If not, we'll do a voice, voice, vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that passes. Communications, do we have any communications?
No.
And we have no continued public hearings, no old business, no new public hearings, no new business, which brings us to audience participation. We have no audience this evening. Staff report.
Let's see, on Monday, the duplex text amendment failed to get out of committee, so that failed.
All right, that's disappointing. Anything else? Or is that it?
No, that's all.
All right. Okay, that brings us to our study session for this evening, where we are continuing to look at the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan Draft. So I'll turn it over to staff.
Okay, good evening. So to just briefly recap last study session, that was the one where we, the sole topic of conversation was what we had been calling future land use types, but we are now calling place types. I don't really have any, any sort of summary prepared, but we'll be working to make updates to, to those place types based on the conversation from last time. It being a short holiday week and getting prepped for, for committee this past Monday, we didn't really have much time to, to do many updates or anything.
Can you remind me, were, did we decide we were going to add a rural residential place type?
We did, yeah. We're gonna add rural residential, and then we're gonna get rid of the institutional and replace that with some sort of, I think we were calling them activity centers, or, I'm not sure if we settled on exactly how we're gonna treat things that have been labeled as institutional, but essentially we just assign them one of the other place types.
Okay.
Okay, so then tonight, sort of as a, I guess as a companion to place types, wanted to discuss street types. And there'd been a student group working on this, and so I met with them on, just, I guess yesterday it was, to kind of go over the work that they had been doing. And I, I had asked them to kind of simplify, because they had had, I think probably eight or nine different street types, and I wanted to kind of pare that down. We can certainly build it up beyond, but I, I thought it made sense to sort of, because Urbana doesn't really have all that. I mean, Urbana's a pretty small place, doesn't really have a whole host of different, different types of streets, so I thought we could kind of narrow it down to a few, a few different types. And then, that's what you'll see in front of you. And we're starting with the National Association of City Transportation Officials Urban Street Design Guide, which is this one right here. And then also, you can find the information on the, on the NACTO website. It's, it's a little tough using this as a guide, it's a really good guide, but I'd say this is, this is designed to be used by cities, so a lot of the stuff in here is sort of for larger cities that have, I'd say, a greater variation in intensities of land use and sort of street, street types. So just, you know, popping into the guide, just want to show you that they have a whole host of different types of street, streets that don't really pertain too much to Urbana, so they have a few downtown street types. We did end up using this one called Downtown Thoroughfare, but I, I don't know if we really want to call it a downtown thoroughfare, but we were kind of using that as a, as a starting point, because we do have certain streets that act more as thoroughfares than they do as sort of more local streets. But again, since this guide is, is designed for sort of larger cities, these downtown streets are, you know, depicted with pretty high intensities. The, the three types that, that we settled on to start with were, again, the, the downtown thoroughfare, or we might just call it a thoroughfare, the neighborhood Main Street, and then neighborhood street. And I'll, I think I'll start sort of with the lowest intensity, which would be the neighborhood street. But before I do that, I wanted to just point out there are other, other street types in here that we don't really have a lot of currently, nor do we, I don't really foresee us having some of these things in the future, although we could. So things like boulevards, residential boulevards, the closest we have to that is down in Stone Creek, which is kind of a pretty light version of that. We could certainly add some of these things if we want to. Transit corridors, that's more of a high intensity thing. They do point out green alleys and residential shared streets and commercial alleys, which, if we want to get into the nitty gritty of downtown or some of our older neighborhoods, we could certainly apply those things to the alleys if, if we wanted to. But I'd say the, and if you look at the, the map, the maps that I handed out, and I, I can pull that up here as well, most of Urbana is sort of just made up of neighborhoods. So most of it is colored as neighborhood streets, which are, you know, really what you would think of as just residential streets. You've got typically two lanes, sometimes you have parking on, on one side or both sides. It's just what you think of as a typical residential street.
Kevin, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Did you, could you explain the logic of why we're using the NACTO standards, or did you, maybe I was zoning that.
I don't, I...
Just, just so we understand and the public understands that's watching this.
Yeah, shoot, what, what is the logic? I mean, I've been, I've been using and looking at these guides for, for years, and I think they're, they give good guidance for sort of how to envision streets as more than just something to move traffic. So I'd say, you know, traditionally streets were places that were part of the, the public realm. And, so I think this guide is, is trying to take sort of the streets as they have been designed, which is just to move traffic usually pretty fast through wherever, whatever area they're going through, and then, and really how to make that better for basically everybody who's using the street. So like in the, in the guide, not on neighborhood streets, but um, if I pop over to one of the other ones, they'll give, they'll usually give sort of like before and after images. So like, this existing image, that actually looks a lot like downtown Urbana, used to, back before, I think in 2009 was when we changed it from, from four lanes to sort of two lanes each way with a center turn lane. And I think if you pop over to the sort of future condition here, you get something that looks a lot like what Main Street looks, looks like in, in downtown Urbana now. So yeah, I guess that's sort of the, the logic of why we thought this would be a good guide.
I'm just trying to understand how it fits within the plan and then the larger sort of regulatory framework. So is the idea that this would then be used to update the standards in the manual practice, or would there be like a little move that is addressing that? Maybe there is already, something like that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I think that's up, up for discussion. And this is probably sort of the, the street types and how, how we would use these in, in the regulatory framework. I think it's probably one of those things that, at least on, on the staff side, we've given it sort of lesser thought than, than a lot of the other things. So it would, it would make sense that if we had, you know, if we had these street types in the plan, that we would be able to update our, our Land Development Code manual of practice to sort of match, match what, you know, what the street types are, which might be good reason to go, to come up with more than just a few different typologies.
Yeah, I want to reinforce what you just said, because I think your, your purpose in using these is pretty clear, but I think they failed dramatically at that purpose. For the reasons you've already begun to say, they're really, I look at these and I say, you know, most of these don't help in Urbana, and we could do better. And the, from the, thinking from the traditional, conventional, let's call it, classification of arterials, minor arterials, collectors, minor collectors, access streets. If I were trying to think about the beginnings of what I think of as design decisions, which I think is what these diagrams are about, like your example of converting Main Street. I, I think we need both aspects of that. So when I look at the, at this in the neighborhood streets, the fact that some of them are collectors, minor collectors maybe by the DOT classification, and some of them really aren't, they're only access streets, to me, from a street layout point of view, that makes a big difference. Because it's not just the cross section that should be different in that case, it's the way the streets achieve continuity. Collectors ought to achieve continuity, access streets may, by design, not allow or enable connectivity, which is one way of controlling speeds and traffic flow. So I think we, we want both kinds of, which, some of the student stuff, I, I didn't see it as recently as yesterday, but, because I didn't look at it yesterday, but the... Anyway, I, I think that there's an advantage in terms of linking it to the Land Development Code, which explicitly refers to a street classification, that at least when I was reviewing the Land Development Code, I thought of as related to the conventional classification. So I'm on the corner of Mumford and Burleson, and I want to know that the city thinks Mumford is a collector or a minor collector, and Burleson is an access street, and I want them to know that that's different. And developing future neighborhoods, I want them to know that's different. But I also, in the, I agree with you that we want to care about cross-section design. But, but most of these examples just aren't, I agree with you, they are very helpful for us in Urbana.
Could we have, I'm just trying to think of how this would be represented. So should we have the traditional, the conventional classification as the sort of controlling classification, and then assign cross-section characteristics to those depending on location?
Well, some kind of, of cross tabulation explicitly or implicitly, I think, is necessary.
I think you'd want to map it, because wouldn't the...
I, I, what I actually thought the students had done was a map classification pretty close to the conventional, and then cross-sections that for each one of those, there was sort of a, a lead cross-section, and then two or three counter, no, not counterexamples, but, but a little bit of variety.
Variations.
Yeah, variations. And that, that, and then maybe, and I, I don't think they got to this, but then on the map that would be based mostly on the conventional classification, annotations of, like, on, on this map, I would think of this and this being identified by annotations, because they're really not different streets from the other streets. Some of these are access streets, that are dead-end and one block long. But, but they have a, I, I understand still the notion that there's a particular set of phenomena here. And the same with downtown, that Illinois Street downtown is different from Illinois Street in the State Streets area.
I think we have, we have an updated version of this, which is, this has the conventional classification on it, down to collector, and then, I guess it defaults to everything else being an access street, right?
Yeah, that's the mobility map that you're looking at? Shoot, I don't know if I have that at the ready.
And I, I think we need this, this has the distinction I just gave in my neighborhood. Funny thing, I should know that. But, anyway, both matter.
Yeah, and I'm trying to figure out how we would use the two, but, but you're right, in the, in the Land Development Code, it, you know, it refers to those conventional types, so we need to have some way to tie those into the plan.
Yeah, cross, cross tabs.
Yeah.
But then, we have the opportunity, and I think the ability, to add the cross-section notions, and the notion that a minor collector can have a variety of cross-sections, as can an access street.
Yeah.
As can an arterial, as can a...
But for the, for the, I'm just trying to think of how this looks in the plan, or what's in the plan. Do we, are we trying to map those variations onto specific locations, or just say that this is the classification, and then there are these possible variations that can apply depending on the context?
That's where I think the annotations come in. I don't think we want to do a complete classification of the cross-sections by, you know, every little street.
Yeah.
But I think by using annotations, we can, you know, Main Street downtown from Lincoln to Race is a particular kind of situation. And I think even just the mix you've identified here, just annotate that these are downtown commercial streets. I mean, it's almost obvious, but...
Well, and I think, I'm not sure where we've discussed it before, but there's this, the reality is that the streets are what they are. Most of them are not going to be changing sort of how, you know, their, their physical characteristics are probably not going to change anytime soon for, for most, most of the streets. But for areas like Vine Street right out here, Illinois Street right over here, we are planning to do some things to change those up in the coming years. So I think however we want to do that, whether it's with annotations, or if we just have, say, you know, maybe we just have a handful of sort of high priority areas that we say we want to focus on these, you know, coming soon.
So if, if, I, I think for those kinds of fairly specific things, we should identify them as
Yeah.
specific projects.
Yeah.
And, and those are, I'm guessing, primarily cross-section modifications, not changing the role of the street. So it's like modifying Main Street, which arguably didn't change the role of Main Street. It changed the cross-section to improve the performance of a complete street.
Yeah, and maybe, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have the, the updated mobility map on me right now, but, I mean, maybe that could just go on there, because we already are identifying certain projects on there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, I'll give that some, I'll give that a shot.
My concern in this is how this, this discussion, which I consider very important and very well formulated here, now that we, we have a place for the traditional street definitions, we, I mean, we have a need for that, as well as something that takes it further. Where, how will this be used in the, in Imagine Urbana? In other words, how can the aims, how can the moves of Imagine Urbana be helped, be reinforced by this discussion that we're having about, about street profiles and, and definitions? For instance, walkability. If we have specific aims, we know we're not going to rescape all of the streets, but we do have aims that are somewhere between broad and specific. It seems that we could formulate our, our aims here about what a street looks like that could directly feed into, say, the aim of walkability. And neighborhood. Place.
So I think some of the cross-section diagrams can be aspirational, which would be one way to link to what Bill's talking about. I mean, some of them, you know, that we've already played with clearly are. So if, if Illinois Street and, which is the other, did you say Vine Street?
Yeah, Vine Street, and also, I'd say Lincoln Avenue, since we're doing two different studies.
Yeah. And, and the kind of transformation would be like the EMCOR project, or the Main Street reconfiguration. Well, also Florida Avenue from Lincoln to Vine.
Right.
Is already underway, yes, or?
The side path.
Is all that's underway now.
Correct.
But there is a, still an ongoing development of a reconfiguration of that.
So there was a, a study that I think we've applied for grants a couple times and have not gotten them, but, but there is...
There was one study already done by RPC, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Also Lincoln, between Florida and Springfield, right?
Right.
Would it make sense, so in addition to having these aspirational sections, would it make sense to articulate somewhere in the plan, kind of like a set of policy recommendations, or something like, what are we trying to achieve when given the opportunity to transform these segments of the network, right, that we think need to be transformed? What is guiding us in doing that? A little more than making the, you know, making walkability a top priority, right? Something, something that has a little more guidance that's included with it.
There's, I don't know if this is getting too specific, but it seems that the, sort of the, the killer street in Urbana has been University, and it strikes me that that's, that that ought to be addressed, and now's the time, it feels to me, to, to get something done on that. And it, I think that our definitions of, of streets and their, what their profiles will be, should provide guidance for that. And in a way, this map scares me in that we've got a thoroughfare at the, at the, sort of the, the bleeding point.
Which segment of University are you talking about?
At Schnucks, at, I think we've had, I think we've had accident, more fatal accidents.
Yeah, there have been a, there have been a couple, sort of, I think one at Broadway, maybe, and maybe one at Race. And since I've been here and I've been here about 10 years.
And University, you mean, the intersections of Race and Broadway and University, yeah.
Yeah.
And also one at Schnucks on Vine Street, I think.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, so that's Main, yeah, Main and Vine. Main and, Main and Vine is also, yeah, is bad. So yes, Bill, University is, I'd say probably the tricky, trickiest street, and I think I saw Lou kind of nodding his head while you were talking, probably thinking the same thing I was thinking, which is, that's a state-controlled street. But it, you know, we can still put things in our plan about state routes, even knowing that we don't actually control necessarily how those get, you know, get built in the future.
But I want to endorse completely what you just said, which is one of the roles we can use our plan for, is to send a message... which is one of the roles we can use our plan for is to send a message signaling to the state, signaling to future funders.
Yeah.
That this is aspirational, something we believe needs to be worked on. So you can hand it to your state rep and pushing. And when I was listening to that comment and looking at this, I realized that this has a connotation of a belt, which at least 20 years ago was explicitly eliminated from the plan documents as an apparent beltway because it was controversial then. I don't know whether it still is, but and, and I don't, I don't know what it, what it means or anything. I'm just realizing that this, this diagram sends some messages that we want to be careful about.
And it's, it's kind of just because those sort of roads on the edge of town are, on the edge of town and they're kind of higher speed and...
No, I, I, I get you. And other than, than Curtis Road, they're state highways. So, so the control of them is complicated. But yes, anyway. I, I shouldn't have bothered with that comment. It's sort of aside. I think we've solved that problem by all the other things we said we were going to do, but... And on the explanation, I think because we're going to have these maps, there's going to be a couple of pages of text explaining these maps. And, and we can use those pages to link to the big move structure without trying to make the big move format cover everything. I, I don't think is practical.
And if, if the state has ultimate say-so over these thoroughfares, it seems that the city should at least have considerable say over intersections. Because that's our, those are our streets. This one may be yours, but these are ours. And so for safety, if, if we're in a safety discussion, and if that appears in Imagine Urbana, then the nature of the intersections may be something we could work on.
But if the intersections are state intersections, then...
Lot of ours.
Yeah, we, we don't have a whole lot of say, but, I mean, intersections are the most important parts. That's the, typically the least safe parts of streets. And for whatever reason, it's often the most neglected when, when streets get designed. It's easy to, to do, you know, bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly design along a segment of street. But when you get to the intersection, it seems like, you know, sometimes people just throw up their hands and don't give it much thought, so.
Another example of why we ought to be explicit about University Avenue is there's a good chance the rail would be abandoned within the next, you know, 20 to 50 years, which is the way we ought to think. And that would change one of the major intersections on University Avenue. And it would also change the potential pedestrian traffic and bike traffic, maybe even more crucially, for some routes. So we ought to be explicit about that as being an intent. Now, it may not be a project that's funded or assigned, but it's something that we ought to be saying we're going to do.
So do you, do you have a sense of, I mean, we've listened, there's been several ideas for potential projects that have been kind of thrown out. But do you have an idea of what that would be? That you could maybe put together and bring back to us to talk about? Or is this something we can do on the fly tonight?
Yeah, I, no, I, I think I, I should probably take a crack at, at taking your comments here and, and then bringing them back. Maybe, maybe at the next meeting, because we do have a meeting on the 19th. We have a case that's going, so I can see what I can put together before then.
I'm just curious, since I wasn't around in 2005, but was this, I've always thought that there was like a strong relationship between what's on here and what's in the LRTP. Is that, but we're talking about things that are not necessarily in the LRTP or whatever, be in the LRTP that are just city priorities?
So I'd say there's, there's both. I'm not sure Lou could probably speak to what it was back in 2005. But in the updated mobility map that the students put together, that, that dovetails nicely with the, the long-range transportation plan, for all of you folks listening at home, which is the region, the regional transportation plan that the Regional Planning Commission puts together. But yeah, we've, we've worked with them and, you know, to get certain projects in, in the long-range transportation plan, those are reflected in the mobility map. But then I think what we're talking about is adding some other things in that wouldn't necessarily be rise to the level of, of regional significance to go in that plan.
Okay.
Yeah. To comment, the mobility map, in this case, was an explicit contradiction to the ongoing LRTP at the time, which is why you have these uncertainty things about where an interchange might be or if there should be one, and whether Olympian should be extended east of 45. And in the discussion of the new LRTP, which we had here, we, we brought up, I mean, one of my examples was they have, or they showed us, as if it were priority, the bike path to Curtis Road and the upgrading of Curtis Road, which I would argue from the city's point of view should be made less salient. And things like we're talking about now should be made more salient. And although you could argue that the University Avenue that we're talking about is not of regional significance, it is of regional significance because it would involve federal funding, because they're state routes. And the LRTP is specifically required to move the federal funding process forward on projects. So even if it isn't in the LRTP, it should be in the plan. And part of that should be the basis for getting it in the LRTP in the future. This is the city's plan. LRTP is an organization of three cities and a county. And, and we don't have to agree on everything. Our priorities can be different.
Okay, well, I think I've, I've got enough to go on in, at least in the next couple of weeks here. So we can move along. So we did, we took a crack, Andrea mostly took a crack at coming up with some sort of like broader or bigger metrics that would tie back to the big ideas and, and the objectives underneath those. So I, we had, we had handed those out and...
So the, the comments that we heard was that we needed to have really two different types of metrics. The, I'll, for simplistic terms, talk about, you know, it's a staff checkoff. And I agree, a lot of them are just almost like a to-do list that you could probably put in somebody's annual goals as a staff member to check off. So that, that makes a lot of sense. And the other comment was that we needed some sort of metric that would determine if we successfully reached our goals, the big ideas. And so looking at this document, this is a document you've seen before, we left the little moves and those metrics alone. Those were the ones that were so specific, not policy-oriented, not determining success. So first of all, in the page, they should be numbered, yes, page two, under, it's the introduction to the big ideas, explaining what the differences are. If you look at the paragraph, barometers of success and metrics. So we called these broader metrics, barometers of success for each of the goals, and you'll see that. And it's explained here in that first paragraph, that barometers of success have been defined for each big idea and metrics have been assigned to each little move. So that's the, the differential between those two. So if you scroll down and look at Big Idea One, for instance, the format's the same. We have the objectives, but then we put in barometers of success. And I know you had mentioned, you know, keeping that, trying to limit the number of those. And you'll see the handout that's separate for Arts and Culture that has many more. But trying to strike a balance, I think what we wanted to see is guidance on, is this the direction that you think we should go? And then we can fine-tune those, those barometers of success, which are the metrics of success for the goals. So these are some broader goals, that it's not that checklist that's saying what determines success of that goal. And you can scroll down for each of the, the big ideas. You can see that we've come up with two or three barometers of success. Our, I will say that our management analysts have looked at this and they've got some different ideas for us. But I wanted to get guidance from you first before we talked further with them.
I think the idea is good. And I think not having seen these
Yeah.
And not having a chance to look through it in depth.
Right, so sorry.
But when I look at like Big Idea Number One and the barometers of success, I don't see a clear connection between the goal or the objectives and what's being measured.
Yeah, I, so that one was, that one's tricky because, well, so it, sort of, maybe to take a, a step back. Well, at least one thing I was thinking of when we were going through these today, coming up with these today, is I was conceiving of these things as being sort of like, these are big picture things, these are things that would be sort of put on, like, you know, say you have like a dashboard or something of like just these, like eight things. And they're just big, you could, you know, have some icons on there or whatever. We've all seen dashboards and, and things. Just something that's like really easy to grasp for, like, right away. And something that's easily updated and we can just report on them, you know, every year or quarterly or whenever, whenever we're doing it. So that, that was kind of what I was conceiving of. And then Dustin, to your point, yeah, it's, it's kind of hard to, it, it's hard to think of something that is sort of easy to measure and that can capture this notion that Urbana is a place for everyone.
Because it's more subjective. And so that was hard to, to have some specific metrics. For instance, if you, you know, came to Urbana for the first time and you say, oh, I like Urbana. Okay, what's that mean to you? Somebody might say, oh, I like it because I see art everywhere, because that's my thing. Or somebody else might say, wow, it's a, I see people of all different ages and, and ethnicities because that's something that resonates with them. So that's, that was our struggle with this first one anyway, to just really have those broader metrics. In fact, we, we left that one for last because it was, we tried to take an easier one first.
Yeah. That might be a problem with the goal, the, the way the goal is.
But that's where, that was the goal that came from public input. Is that, you know, they want us to stay that, stay that. They want us to keep Urbana as a place for everyone.
Yeah, I just think, yeah, I mean, I, off the top of my head or not coming up with something, but
Right.
definitely measuring an increase in population is not it. I mean, nowhere does the plan say anything about growth in Urbana, and it doesn't...
Yeah.
So I agree, there, there needs to be some thinking about what that might be, but not population.
The other thing we, we went back to, in the letter part of the plan, we had differential between community metrics and then the plan metrics. So some of those, we went back to that community metrics list to see if some of those could be extracted for these larger goals. So that's a thought too, is to kind of revisit those, the community metrics. Those community metrics weren't supposed to be metrics that the plan impacts. It was just more trends, to watch trends. So they weren't really specific to the goals either.
I mean, I, when I look at the objectives, there are clearly things that you could measure for the objectives. But then I also have a hard time understanding the relationship between some of the objectives and the overall goal, which, different problem. But were you, were you going to say something, Miss Sims?
I had just a couple of thoughts around metrics. And, and again, we, I have to sort of sit and look through it. I'm anticipating that some of the equity measurements, if you were really seri, if we really were going to have equity initiatives, that there would be metrics about that because there are areas where people are underrepresented. So when we look at the inclusive resilient business like strategies, there's nothing in that section that is an equity initiative that one would anticipate, like, that you would want to change, you know, the underrepresentation of certain types of businesses or who has that. So I, I, I think if, if you want to keep, or we can remove the equity, but if there are some measurements that, that would be clear, like around inclusion, that wouldn't be just our own local subjective experiences. There are some data points, just like everything else, about what an inclusive community looks like. The same thing around what does a resilient community look like? Like, I'm also seeing some missing elements around things that people are looking at, around climate resilience. And, you know, there's, there's some other variables that I feel like we've not, that, that show up in other places in the plan that we've talked about that just didn't get here. So it might be a little bit more in the weeds that...
But I, but I like that, that train of thought. Because I know when we were looking at this earlier, when we had the big moves and relating them back to the big ideas, so many of them relate back to that Big Idea One because they all have a play or have a part in making us a welcoming community. And I think that's where you're going with that. The only one that we attempted to address that was, yeah, we don't want population subgroups decreasing. That means we're not friendly to that particular subgroup. But there's more that we could delve into there, I think. Yeah, I like that approach with this one.
Maybe it's not, maybe the, the approach of trying to think of it as like this broad dashboard kind of thing is not the way to go. Maybe the way to go is to think of it more in terms of areas where the city is, has a particular deficit or a particular challenge that we really want to have a good sense of movement on or pay more attention to. So maybe like what Miss Sims is describing about, you know, access or, you know, entrepreneurial activity related to different groups. Maybe tracking something like that is what is the most important thing related to knowing if Urbana is a place for everyone, right? So, or it's, it's something that we think is key to achieving something like that.
And we do address the entrepreneurial part in one of the other big ideas. It might be helpful now just to look at the other ones and then come back to this one. Because this, this one really is a little more global or all-encompassing. The other ones are a little bit more specific. And I like, I like where this is heading. But if we could look, maybe look at the other ones and just to give you an idea, this is the first time you're looking at it, I know. The other...
Explain this city population versus size of road network. Like, what, what would... Explain this city population versus size of road network, like, what would that be?
Sorry, that, that one, we, we were throwing it in there just because we, we had reported that in Examine Urbana, and it's kind of just relating sort of our infrastructure burden to our population, and I kept that one in there for discussion purposes, but I, I would love it if we could have a metric that somehow relates to our infrastructure burden and sort of on a, on a per capita basis, because I think that's where cities get into fiscal trouble, is overextending their infrastructure without the tax base to match.
And we had, one of our previous meetings, we went over Big Move Four, and we had some diagrams that we shared with you that had some of this, the trends. We could see having those really trends and diagrams helping alongside this. And we can come back with.
Ratio of revenue to infrastructure costs, or something, something like that.
Yeah.
I think that's getting closer to the issue, because these other measures you've got, it is total revenues that matter, and if we do per capita, we're not taking account of industrial land, or employment entities, or non-taxable land.
Yeah.
Urbana's a big problem. So total revenue versus total infrastructure cost, or something like that, is a lot closer to what I think the issue is.
Yeah, and not, like, just annual costs, but capital, something that captures long-term capital improvements, right?
Is there an asset management plan in Urbana?
There is, I know Public Works is working on, on one, I think, yeah, they're, they're definitely in, in the works.
If there weren't, if there weren't accounting asset framework in Public Works, that would be one half of the measure we were just discussing, to have total revenue versus assets. An asset management plan ought to be taking into account value of capital and future liability, because I understand that that's what's such an asset.
And this is a point I think Kevin's kind of alluding to too, is getting guidance from you, then we can go back to Public Works and say, yes, what, what kind of.
What kind of measures can you provide?
That we can, it's got to be something that we can tangibly get, and I'm sure there's ones that we don't know about, and, so I'd like to take this and go back to the individual departments that we're impacting and.
It might nudge them to work on the asset question a little bit, or to modify it to serve this purpose, because that's clearly one of the key issues that is driving all this.
And the second one is, I'm assuming like an average of property tax per acre?
Yeah, that, again, I didn't, don't have that slide either, I'm sorry. The ones that we shared with Big Move, Move Number Four at one of our previous meetings, we had a diagram that showed that, showed the buildings in a 3D, you know, that type of.
Yeah, so if we have more of those really tall.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, but, but that would just.
Then that would increase the property tax per acre over the whole, whole city, right?
Right. So, yeah, I mean, essentially, you're just looking at the entire, you're doing that graph for just the entire city's footprint, right?
If that is, I'm not sure that that's what we want, but if that's what we want, then that would be one way to measure.
But I think the revenue over asset is a much better measure.
I, I agree. It's, if, if for some reason we couldn't do that, this would be an okay fallback, maybe, but, yeah, I think if we get that, we could probably just strike this one.
Yeah.
Well, and if we can't get the other one, property tax dollars per acre is not in itself adequate. We'd have to create something more complicated, because that doesn't take into account any of the other revenue sources.
Yes, this is just one source, you're correct.
And it doesn't take into account the anomalies of this community, where huge portions of the annexed area are non-taxable. And, so, if we end up having to use that, we, we need to refine it.
Yeah.
Maybe property tax per taxable acre, or something, anyway, we don't need to figure it out now, but.
But somehow, I want to, I want, I want always to be in the conversation, this, this reality that over 30% of our land is not taxed, so, hmm, I don't know, I don't know how we do that, but if, you know, if we just, because when somebody comes to do something, right, we're, we're like, hey, it's, it's generating taxes, this is good, if we can point to something.
I think the best metric is the one you just used. For that problem, the thing that conveys the message of that problem is that 30% of our land is non-taxable.
Yeah.
And that's pretty easy to measure as a, you know, sort of footnote, so do the revenues per asset footnote, current percentage of land non-taxable.
But that only changes if we annex land, or if we.
Or if the county.
If something converts, yeah, yeah.
Or if the county sells. Or if the feds come in with another courthouse, or the university buys another chunk of Urbana.
I mean, I have a feeling we're going to have to take that one out to a couple decimal places at least, but, you know, it's, and the reason, the reason that we came up with the, the word barometer here is because it's just, you know, we're just looking at trends, we're not necessarily setting a target, right? And if, if it says, if, if it's, you know, if this measure is falling, like, the percent of non-taxable land, that's good, even if it falls .01%, that's, hey, that's progress.
And if it goes up, it's a problem.
Yes.
But what, just to tie this back to the, the big idea, I mean, what we really want to know is how revenues compare to costs, right? So not, we're not just trying to increase revenues for the sake of increasing revenues, which, I think we just want to make sure that we're capturing that, right? So we can also reduce costs, I mean, there's other ways that that sort of changes, right? And costs could increase, which would mean we would need to increase revenues, but it's that ratio that we're really interested in.
It's about resilience in the long term.
Right.
I really appreciate this discussion. I consider metrics to have a core importance in, in Imagine Urbana, and I think it's critically important to step from the checklist of the small items to finding the larger items. And as we've been discussing now, there's, and previously, that's very difficult to do, especially if we haven't been doing it in the past. And this, this discussion we have just had, I think, points to the possibility, the feasibility, and the importance of financial resilience being handled real well, and a lot of effort being put into getting the right metric for that, because it's a, it's much more quantifiable than the, than the other big moves that we have. So I would consider it a great success if we were able to get a barometer, a successful barometer that we can use on that. With regard to the other big moves that are much more difficult to quantify, the effort, I think, needs to be made, but I don't know that it can be completed in the timetable that we have for Imagine Urbana. But if somebody's going to sell Urbana to newcomers, to investors, the more, the more we are able to say, here's the metric for Urbana as a place for everyone, here's, here's the metric we use, that's what is going to be much more convincing than it appearing as a bullet point in a, in the document. I just want to stress the importance that I attribute to achieving metrics that may be difficult to achieve. I think the financial ones, I think we really should achieve that for this version, and somehow or other begin the process of assigning good metrics to the other big moves, although we might not quite be, may not be as successful as I hope we can be with the finance.
So, at the moment, I'm a little confused, we're focusing on metrics for big ideas, not big moves, correct?
Correct.
I think you made that clear to begin with, but I'm trying to keep it in mind. So, I think there's a flip side to what Bill is saying, and that is, that because we know how to do financial stuff, and with a little luck, we can get a pretty good measure, that we will do what our metrics, you know, will, will study to the test, and if we don't have a test for equity that is equal to our test for financial, we will not achieve any equity. So I think we need to work now, not later, at least as hard on coming up with as persuasive, at least one. I mean, it's, so, I, I'm pretty positive about the potential of getting revenue over assets with a footnote, okay? That, within that, we can get at all kinds of things and look at why it happens, you know, if, if it goes up or goes down, we know how to go into it and think how it happens. We need something at least as good for equity, and I'm not sure what it is, but when I go back, you know, I think we've now done this thing of going forward and looking at some of the others, if I go back to that one, and, you know, I'm working out loud here, this is not that I have an answer, but I look at 1.3, which is broadening economic base and housing options in ways that reflect the city's diversity. So I'm, I'm going to imagine that we have a distribution of capabilities, is a word some philosophers use for this concept, I'm not sure whether it means anything to anybody else, and the opportunities available across those diversities of capabilities. So if we know that, if we know what the wealth slash income capacities of the mix of people in this community are, what's the match of that to the mix of available housing, which you can also relate to, I mean, you can mix capital and rental, we know how to do that, right, so that we can talk about those as both being options, and we can mix wealth and income in ways we know to be option. Now, the irony of that, maybe, is that it's also, I've come up with a financial measure, but at least it's a financial measure of equity.
Looking at the.
And health, because I feel like we don't have enough in the plan around it being a healthy community, and if you have, what, 20% or 23% of your residents having housing insecurity consistently, you're paying for it as a city, you might have more money on the other end if more people had stable and consistent housing, because it's costing you across the board, you know, in social services, in law enforcement, and you're paying, you know, in education. So imagine if you really were serious about being a healthier, rightly, you know, I, I don't feel like we've identified enough of the health and wellness, I mean, I think here we have this great wellness center being developed around trying to think about, it's why we talked about walkability and bicycles and, you know, just a lot of the conversation, but it doesn't pepper in, and if your community is healthier, not just aesthetically pleasing, it will be more economically viable, and people will want to be here, right? So it's just, there's far more resources than it would be, so I have some thoughts, I mean, I think, like, some of even how we framed the cultural section misses, why you want culture, because you want art and music, because it helps you be healthier, right? Like, it's not just this standalone abstract idea, it's what helps people be better and mentally well and less stressed in a community, it is not a thing by itself, right? There's a why, not just a what.
To go, to go back, Ms. Sims, on what you were talking about with housing, et cetera, one of our community metrics had been rent burden, how that's a percentage of their monthly income, of a person's monthly income, and we had a baseline in here, so that's something that could be measured that I think hits on what you're saying, and then the same thing for homeowners, the homeowner costs as a percentage of their income too, to see that trend.
Why not make that the, the key metric for Big Idea One? I mean, I think it, we have to define what we mean by, by equity, like, we have to decide what we mean by equity and what we're trying to achieve, but something like that sounds like a decent metric for Urbana as a place for everyone.
And that's what I'm saying, I think if we went through these community metrics, you can pull out some that I think that are relevant to move to the, to address those goals.
But, so, I'm trying to get at, so what I suggested a minute ago would be close to what you're describing, I think, but, but it has to be presented, it's not, it's not the average rent burden of the community, that doesn't get at equity. It's the distribution of rent burden by income/wealth category.
Yeah, yeah, it's not.
You could, you could delve in a deeper.
The rent burden can go way down if Mr. Khan, you know, spends less of his money on his next house, sorry, I shouldn't be talking that way, but you get what I mean. The, we need to actually be measuring equity, which is a distributional question, it's not an average.
So more by subgroup we're talking about, not just like the overall community, but by.
Income.
Yeah, it's got to be parsed out, yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, because equity is where people have been historically underrepresented and served, however that is, that you reduce the access and availability barriers so that everyone can meaningfully be at the table. And so, if historically I'm from a community that doesn't have access to capital because of structural barriers, that there are policies and procedures in place that remove those structural barriers so that I can have an active seat at the table, so, we might do that by gender, we might do that by immigration status, we might do, there are going to be different equity variables, but like, right now, we have an over-representation of women and children who are experiencing homelessness. So the equity barrier would be in 10 years, or rightly, how do we do it? Because Champaign County, in looking at adverse community experiences or adverse childhood experiences, we're always having the second reported rates of children with adverse community experiences in the state. One anticipates that because we have a high rate of homelessness. In 10 years, if children had consistent homes, one would anticipate that they wouldn't have so much adversity, and it would save us a lot of money as a community to not have children. you know, that many children left behind. It, it also makes us a more welcoming community. Cause I promise you, when you think, boy, why would a college town have so many children having so much childhood adversity? Doesn't make you think it's a place for everyone.
So the housing becomes a sort of underlying measure of a lot of other things. That's what I hear you say. But there's also, I hear, a services question. And that we need a measure of that that's different. And I don't know what that might be. But I'm sort of hearing that we do. And I don't know how to do that. And it, it's not that I can't imagine 100 ways to do it. I want something that will actually be measurable and visible and on the first page of the dashboard, not the 32nd footnote on the appendix.
This is very good input that I think we can go back and really redirect our efforts in trying to pin down some of these more specific metrics. Knowing that this particular goal has to do with environmental resiliency too. We've added the tree canopy, that's something. When I went back to the community metrics, they're a little more specific, but they don't relate back to resiliency. And that's the point of this particular goal is, you know, being resilient going forward. In the community metrics, there were things like land, landfill waste generation, recycling rates, median air quality index, greenhouse gas emissions. Those are all metrics that relate to the environment, but doesn't relate to resiliency. And that's, there's, I know that's a fine line, but would like your take on that.
I think there's got to be something better. I don't think tree canopy doesn't cut, I mean, we could have, you know, we could be facing more severe storms that knock more trees down and knock the power out and then
Out of our control.
We're not very resilient, right? So I, I, I think there's a whole literature about this, but I don't know it off the top of my head. So I think.
Will the literature give us like one or two?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, I asked ChatGPT and it didn't, it didn't give me anything that I could use right away. I knew that we, we do keep track of our tree canopy. So this is one that we're, this could be a, a proxy as a placeholder. But like many things that we throw in here, it's to generate discussion, so.
So sustainability of Scott tests is, I mean, I, I would ask him.
Oh, I'm, yeah, we're, we're going to.
One of the notions of resilience in one simple form is the ability to bounce back.
Exactly right.
And the disaster recovery literature identifies the paradox that ideally you don't want to bounce back to where you were before. You want to bounce back to someplace different. So the whole idea of resilience, if you're really going to talk about resilience, which becomes a buzzword for good, like sustainability and all these other words. It, it's capacity to absorb and recover. So a measure of resilience is the availability of nursery trees after the storm, not how many trees you've got.
It's also something about the geographic distribution of those trees. Cause I imagine some neighborhoods are, you know, have more tree canopy than others.
You, you are correct in that.
There's an equity question here.
And that, I was just gonna say that goes back to Ms. Sims' question about, or talking about equity in some neighborhoods that don't have them.
So some of the things, right? Talked about like the nature of green space coverage, thinking about a sustainability infrastructure, like flood protection systems and green roofs, climate action. So I think that there could be metrics that are available. And I love the green space coverage, cause I think it talks, it's aligned with some of the other things that we've talked about here. That you, you know, that would be really good data. The other thing from like my world of looking at neighborhood resilience is also what is the, we look at how connected neighbors are to each other as a resilience measure, right? So one of the things that people are doing organizational work is when a crisis happens, neighborhoods that are connected are more likely to bounce back than when neighbors don't know each other. The impact, and so a lot, there's actually a house bill that is out around looking at this whole idea of community resilience and climate change. Because they realize that when communities are disconnected, when climate change happens, seniors die, people don't talk to each other, you can't get to what you need to do. But the more you build an infrastructure of connection, the more when a bad thing happens, the infrastructure can be much more grassroots and you don't have to keep waiting for. So it's why you would want a fire department much more accessible, you know? So it, it impacts all of your planning decisions when you want to think about those community connections.
Do we know what our environmental risks are? That are the most prominent, I guess. I mean, that might be also a starting point.
Yeah.
So there is a climate action plan. Climate action plan might or might not be part of this comprehensive plan.
And that's one of the goals is to rewrite the, or to draft the, the new or update the climate action plan.
I mean, that, yes, that's a to-do list item.
Yeah, exactly.
So what, what is the way that we incorporate these things in the comp plan that we're trying to make? And one way to do that might be to look at the climate action plan, which I grant you, I haven't looked at for a while. And that would serve two purposes. One is it might show us what we, we think we're doing. But the other is we need to do that in order to figure out whether we're going to include it or exclude it, because it, I'm pretty sure is an adopted amendment to the current comprehensive plan.
Should the Sustainability Commission be charged to develop a sustainability resilience metric for Urbana?
Consulted with.
Yeah, I was gonna say, definitely we can, we can talk to Scott, Scott about that. And, and they may already have something in mind. So like I said, this, as Kevin stated too, I mean, this, tonight, we wanted to generate discussions so that we can go back and really do some more in-depth work.
Yeah, no, I think this is great. I mean, I definitely like the idea of two per and, you know, thinking through both what's a really good measure, but also what's something that we can reasonably get access to in terms of data and keep up with.
So connected neighborhoods was the next one. And I think going back to Ms. Sims' point, what we have here is more, you know, infrastructure type things that are going to help.
Well, I'm afraid like Kevin, earlier you said, you know, most of our streets are unlikely to change that much. So where, why would we expect big increases in the change in the walk score?
Well, I mean, when I said that, I'd say just the, I don't know, I guess like the, the right of way that the street occupies is probably not going to change very much. We might have reason to change some of the, you know, to change some streets over time. But I think, you know, an increase in walk score, so one thing that walk score looks at is your proximity to stuff you need to get to, right? Like things you need on a daily basis. So if we did something like allow some corner stores in neighborhoods that are otherwise far from corner stores or grocery stores, that, you know, that could be something that would increase our walk score.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know what all goes into the calculation. But if it's stuff that we think we could actually see movement on in a reasonable amount of time, then that's worthwhile.
When I looked at it three months ago, it did not look to me like a very good score for keeping track of what's going on in Urbana. It seems to me that because it's a weighted index of a bunch of things. So even if, I mean, I don't have quite the same view you do about how neighborhood stores work. But even if we expected some of those things to change, they would be so small a portion of the walkability score as computed by the standard mechanism that they'd barely show up. So I think it goes back to what are we actually trying to accomplish? One measure would be pedestrian traffic.
Fatalities.
Fatalities, injuries, crashes, whatever. My guess is our numbers are so small on that, that it's not a very useful index.
Correct.
So, so
And that's a good thing.
Want to step back, that, well, it's not a useful index. The fact that there are four or five is not good. We want to eliminate that. But as something to measure, it, it's not likely to really tell us whether we're doing things. So if we back up and say, what do we think we might actually do to accomplish that? Street cross section redesigns, sidewalks in areas where there aren't sidewalks. In other words, this might be an area where specific projects of a particular kind.
And I think that ties in with equity also, because I have our walkability score in 2020 was 52. We had a member of the community that was real in-depth on walkability. And he brought in some research that he had done and showed walkability in neighborhoods. And so it's much, it's more drastic when you see a really high walkability score in some of the neighborhoods in Urbana. And then others, it's, it's extremely low. And so I think that's another thing that we could use, maybe walkability like these, like one of our other statistics where we said we needed, we really need to not look at the community at large, we need to look at subgroups. I think that's another way we could use walkability. Some of the other things that we had, had in the community metrics, I'll just quickly go through. Walkability was one, the length of the bicycle network, you know, the trails. I mean, that's something that I think we can influence. You know, we've got the Kickaboo Rail Trail, hopefully when that comes to fruition. We also had a number of residents within a 10-minute walk to a public park. Okay, we're not necessarily in control of that. I mean, we have a park district that does that. So I'm not sure how much we can control something like that to make a difference. Residential parcels within one quarter mile of a transit stop, that's something else. I know transit stops are more important to some areas of our community than others. And all that's available, that, that data is available.
We, so one possibility might be to create our own walking, biking score, where it would include the equity question somehow by distribution. And it would have, I, I'm, I'm making it up, but miles of improved, what I think of as complete streets, but in other words, improved cross sections by neighborhood.
And I think, I think that data
Percent of complete streets, we need a different label, but by neighborhood, which would be an equity measure as well as a accomplishment of something.
Also, I think what you're getting at might be encompassed in this, in the third bullet on here, which is, I, I can't believe I hadn't brought this up before, but there is a measure that they use to measure sort of the, they call it level of traffic stress, which is, cause engineers typically look at level of service, which basically is how fast you can drive on a, on a street. That's, that's, that's basically what it is. And that's what they used for decades. They still use it to measure stuff. But somebody came up with this level of traffic stress, which is like if you're walking along a street, they use different physical factors, like is the sidewalk separated from the road? How fast is the speed limit there? How fast is the traffic actually moving? So, you know, and then they rate it from one to four. So it's, it's like, it's a pretty easy thing to measure. I know RPC has actually measured that for the region. So it's something we have access to. So that could be something that just gets at this.
Right, so that, I, I think that's close to what I was trying to imagine, though I hadn't noticed it. And, and, but we, we could do that, you know, by area. I don't want to call it neighborhood, cause we classify them in some arbitrary way. But somehow we, I mean, the, the way I would do it is probably just a map of change in stress levels by street link. As a way of saying, we've accomplished, we're either accomplishing something we wanted to accomplish, or you know what? We're not.
And one thing that typically you will notice if you look at level of traffic stress maps is that it typically, they, they appear to be very influenced by the traditional hierarchy of street types, where you will have very low stress in your residential streets. And then when you come to an arterial road with fast-moving traffic, oh, suddenly it's high stress. So just wanted to point that out.
Well, but what I'm imagining, cause you're describing this, is that you, cause I was gonna do it, we maybe can create a version of it that fits Urbana. So that if you modify the cross section on Illinois Street from race to vine, you can show by your own mechanism of assessment that you have lowered stress. And lowering stress should be, in my view, for the pedestrian, the cyclist, the driver, the transit rider and the freight delivery guy. Cause, you know, I, I, I put on a visibility vest to drive here tonight because I stress out when the people walking in similar black coats walk across in front of me, which somebody did as I came past the junior high school, casually walking across a crosswalk invisible. So that was stressful for the driver.
Yeah. Well, so, you know, one thing that shouldn't be shocking, but I, I think it's something people don't think about is that, you know, they've found, many studies have found that when you do things to say, make places better for people walking and biking and you're, you know, you're, you're doing these measures to make it better for them. It also makes it safer for drivers and it lowers the driver's stress. So it's, you know, it's, it's not
Yes.
gotta be this adversarial thing. It's not like, you know, which is why I don't like using terms pedestrian, cyclist or motorist. I, I hate motorist most of all, because it conjures up images of being in a Model T with a scarf waving back with goggles on or something. But, yeah, but those tend to sort of separate people into camps. So I, I like to talk about just people and, you know, we're all people, whatever. I'll get off my soapbox.
But you still have to acknowledge all the modes.
Yeah.
But, but I, I agree, the idea that accommodating all the modes, it's a coexist, it's a coexist kind of thing, not a competitive
Yeah.
thing. Which the traditional, you know, traffic level of service, it's basically a competitive thing. It's how much time does it take a driver of a car to get from point A to point B?
Yeah.
I like your stress thing, I think that's
All right.
Let's, let's move on to the
Can I ask just a small question?
Sure.
Because if the, and I don't know how we measure this, but if the idea is, is that we want it to be a series of connected neighborhoods, one of the things that I'm aware of is that people frequently don't connect. And it would, and I don't know if we studied why they don't connect, but, you know, there's research that says people tend to stay within their six blocks or five blocks and don't venture out, right? And so and there are lots of reasons for that, but to me, in a healthy community, people go beyond their six blocks. So is it around how roads are designed or how boundaries are created? But I'm imagining if we were a series of connected neighborhoods, people would move, there would be a lot more fluidity, and maybe that is through walking or bicycling, but I just am aware that, you know, one of the things that shocked me was that there would be people from this community who've never been on campus, who are born and raised and have never gone on campus. So clearly, it is not connected, where people don't even know it exists, and, and we could choose many neighborhoods like that where people don't know and don't see, and I would just love to think about what those variables that would increase access.
Thank you. So for number four, arts and culture, that's a separate handout. If you could just see, it's all on one page. We hadn't vetted that as thoroughly as the other three until late, late this afternoon.
Yeah, at about 3:30, I asked our arts and culture coordinator to throw out some ideas, so that's what you've got there.
Give you, give you time to look through those.
May I, may I address this just from conversation I had with a longtime Champaign resident, guy about my age who, who loves music, loves guitar music, and he said that Urbana has totally taken the, the, has captured the music scene from Champaign. And I guess it has done that through its bars and
Yes.
In large part.
Well, and we've, we've had some incentives to encourage that, like, for instance, Rose Bowl, you know, that came about during COVID in order to have
Oh, okay.
They wanted to have outdoor entertainment because you couldn't be inside, and so we allowed one of our parking lots to be leased to do that, and they just took it to a whole different level. We required a certain number of events to occur, and, you know, they really knocked it out of the park, so that was an incentive that really paid off, but
The, what, what I found here was that the, was that local businesses did the art scene, in a sense, and, and I don't see the role of businesses in this barometer of success.
That's a good point, because they're, they're a big part of it, and that's, yeah, we didn't, we didn't hit on that.
There's gotta be a better overall measure, again, I'm unsure what it is right away, but
Right, I don't, I don't know either. It's, yeah, it is piecemeal, but
So if the musician, if the local musicians know that Urbana has captured the local music scene, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, how do we, what are we actually trying to accomplish and how, and how do we measure it? My sense is that the, the reasons for this are partly downtown business success, broadly speaking. Not just the arts as the arts, but it's one of the things that is in downtown Urbana. You know, there could, maybe an equity element in this, in a, in a similar way to the other things, if we could figure out how to do it. But I, it's just not clear to me how we, how we can measure, because it's not clear to me why we're, what we're trying to do here.
Well, the, what we heard from the community was, was this, this vibe that Urbana has, and they want to retain that. It's something that, that everyone's proud of. We heard everything from keep Urbana weird to, you know, we've got this eclectic vibe going on, and we heard that over and over as a positive thing. Not that we're weird, because it's, it's a weird, it's a bad thing, it's a good thing. And so that was the, the basis of that goal coming about, is to, to retain that and to keep the, keep that superiority that we have in being the place for, for arts and culture. I think going to the, the equity side of that, a couple of things here. Increased accessibility, and we're not just talking about ADA accessibility there. I mean, that, that's obvious, that sometimes there's venues, and then people that have mobility issues aren't able to attend, because there's not sidewalks that get them there, or et cetera. But it's also in neighborhoods too, that certain neighborhoods don't access, like Ms. Sims is talking about, that connectivity. If something's going on in another neighborhood, other neighborhoods maybe don't participate in that. So anyway, there's, there's equity issues as well in, in culture, and then we talked about also, it's just the diversity in the artists. That sometimes we select artists and making sure that we have diversity in those selections as well, so not just diversity in those, diversity in those that are funded, I think is important as well, just from the artist's perspective.
So, as I think Bill pointed out, this seems to be mostly about public sector actions, the way it's worded, but my sense is that Urbana's weirdness is mostly privately generated.
It is, yeah, but
So we're, we're enabling it somehow as a city.
Yeah, well, our, I can't speak. Our arts and culture program does a lot to sort of help, help that along. And the, the whole section in Examine Urbana covers that really well. So I, I mean, I think the whole, the whole idea, at a loss for words here, the whole idea behind this big idea is, yeah, is to, you know, retain and enhance the, this vibe that Urbana's got going on, because without this big idea, we could do whatever else we're talking about in the plan, it would be a great plan, and Urbana could be pretty awesome going forward still, but you know, you, you could probably take, take the plan and put it in some other community, and it would probably help that community as well, but it's like, we, we have a uniqueness here, you know, so we're trying to, I'd say, you know, embrace that, and this is how we're trying to work it in, I guess.
And I, and we can encourage it, you know, one of the things in the little moves, those checkbox items with streamlining the permitting process, you know, because, you know, you get caught up in bureaucracy and those private sector groups or community groups, okay, I'm done, it's too much red tape for me to go through. So, you know, that's one of the things that, that we can control and, and help, help ease that.
So the barometer of success should be measuring the outcome of having improved the permit process? I mean, again, I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah.
We're trying to get at the outcomes, and more of it, or sustaining it, or increasing the number of participants, or the number of generators, or something. Anyway, I don't have a good idea, but I, I understand now the focus. We gotta come up with an outcome that is associated.
And the culture is bigger than art and music. I just want to keep reminding you, that's only one tool. So if you really want to write, be inclusive, it's gotta be a broad cultural lens. And then the other thing that I heard in this conversation that I think would expand that is to think about having more opportunities for both the public and private sector, so not only just through grants and what comes from the city, but I think through the parks departments, what, you know, from what businesses are doing. It's how does that kind of work as a unified sort of front, it's a very collaborative model, where everybody's sort of embracing this idea that it's a culturally rich place, but it comes from both business and nonprofit, and from, you know, maybe public donations. I've been in some places where, again, the philanthropic community is really invested in the arts and culture, but we don't really allow for here. This seems like much more of like a grant project, rather than we can see money coming from a lot of different places, and that helping, like, I think about shopping downtown at Urbana is unique because it has many more smaller stores that you don't see everywhere, so there's and then more of business owners who are looking for those kind of niche boutiquey feels might be attracted to that, but notice that doesn't show up here, but that's all the things that feed into the culture. So thinking about collaboration, thinking bigger than your grants, thinking how culture gets expressed much more broader and deeper in the larger plan. I actually think it shows up in everything, right? So there's no variable that you've talked about, that we've talked about here, that isn't, doesn't help create the kind of culture that you're, you're creating. The art is just one manifestation of it, but the connection, the financial, the resilience, the, the climate, all of that sort of feeds into the same narrative.
So we have an example right now, I can't say what the name of the place is going to be, but a group that's wanting to revitalize a former bar, maybe I'll call it that, but making it much more entertainment-driven, event-driven, et cetera. And they chose Urbana because of that, because of this vibe we have, and they're local people. They've chosen, you know, this is where we want to be, we want to be in Urbana with us, and some of the investors are from Champaign, but they want to be in Urbana. And we have tools, incentives to help revitalize vacant buildings or buildings that have been underutilized, so that's kind of hitting at that, how do we help the private sector, and we're not mentioning that. We're not mentioning those types of tools that we have, that, we have redevelopment agreements, we have TIF money that can be used towards incentivizing those rehabilitation of those buildings for, for that purpose, and so that's missing.
In the summer, the farmer's market is a tourist attraction. People have family, bring them to the farmers, you know, that's how you get a feel for Urbana, you know, like, it misses some of
I, I think one of the things I'm hearing is that Big Idea says Urbana embraces, embraces its cultural vibrancy and character, and you're pointing out that it says cultural, whereas what it seems we're talking about is arts and music.
I think that is culture, I mean
Well, that is part of culture, but the the farmer's market and the unusual stores are, to me, part of the culture of downtown Urbana that makes it, it's not just the bars here that are different from the ones in Champaign and make Urbana a place for a different kind of
Well, if you, if you go to Big Move Five, it explains it better about what we're talking about with the arts and culture program. Urbana is known for its thriving arts and music scene and its eclectic vibe. These are character-defining features of the city which appeal to both residents and visitors. The urban arts and culture program has been very successful in fostering creative expression and cultural engagement despite limited resources. Increasing investment in the arts and culture program will support more artists and cultural events and build upon Urbana's reputation as the region's art and culture hub. Not only will additional funding bring more arts to the city, it will have a positive impact on economic development.
But that's all about arts. It still sounds like arts and music.
Well, that, that part is, yeah.
Either Big Idea Four should be arts and music, or it should acknowledge that culture is more than arts and music, and I think the opportunity in downtown Urbana is to acknowledge and build on the culture of downtown Urbana, which is very different from the culture of downtown Champaign.
So what I'm hearing is we probably need more than one sentence under Big Idea Four, and we probably need some objectives that sort of tie into cultural, the larger cultural vibe, right?
And also rest, I mean, do you, we have so many, like, small, the Mexican ice cream shop, we have the new African restaurant, we have, we have things that you just don't get in Champaign. We, we just have a lot more, again, diversity, that, that I think, that's just even beyond downtown, that just make us unique and special.
I like that perspective. We're talking about the business diversity.
Right, and so this is, this is cultural, and I, I, my, my reaction at the moment is keep Big Idea Four worded the way it is, and add this notion.
Yeah.
He sort of doubles its content.
I like what
To be really about two things at the moment are completely separate.
Kevin's comment about just expanding upon that explanation, and then making sure that we support that as well.
And one of the ways we support that is keeping downtown cheap.
Well, I just, before this event, we, there's a group called New to See You, and it welcomes people into this, that for the, if you've moved here in the last two years, it's a place to meet people, and, and we talked about our Think Urbana program there. It was actually in Urbana, but it's hosted throughout Champaign and Urbana at different places, and it was at Gallery Art Bar this evening, and, you know, it's just every, you know, these are just unique little businesses that we have that you just don't find everywhere, and they appeal to different audiences. You know, not everybody likes maybe that, but they like, you know, Rose Bowl, and so, yeah, we have a really diverse environment here of businesses and, and music venues, et cetera, so it's a great place to be.
I don't know what the metric is, but I know what the idea is.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good. I mean, we got, we got off topic a little bit, because we got into the Big Idea actual thing. No, I'm joking, but yeah, that's, that's awesome.
This is, this is the guidance we were looking for, is, you know, just to, so I think what we're hearing is that the barometers of suc, barometers of success is kind of the format we're gonna go with, but we just gotta fine-tune and, and get things that are, you know, the outcomes, focus on the outcomes.
Okay, so yeah, just, I guess next steps, we'll work on this stuff that we talked about tonight, as well as the stuff we've talked about previously.
And the maps, what, how do you want to summarize the maps, where we're at with that?
I mean, they've been, they, students updated them a little bit, and, yeah, so we'll
Talking about the, the names of the streets, we need to go back and
Yeah, but
Street types.
There is work to do, so.
Anything else for us, as far as what you'd still like to see us working on? It's been a great conversation, I mean, really has, all these past few meetings.
I want to just reflect on a while back when we were talking about economic, downtown as economic growth engine, and I think at that time, we don't like the language to focus on downtown so much, but now through today's discussion, I think it's clear that downtown is an engine, maybe not directly generating tax revenue, but it's generating the sense of identity. So when we're working on that section about the downtown, that's also expand that aspect. also expand that aspect of it. So, we, I think it's going to be pretty easy for people to buy in, to build a vibrant downtown in here. And if it can be a economic driver, better. But it is doing what it's supposed to.
Appreciate that perspective. Anything, any other parting words for us, before we hunker down and get ready for the next meeting?
Staffing.
Yeah. Yeah, we understand. I mean, we've, we've given you guys a lot of feedback. And I just want to say that for those who are listening in the administration, in the city, that it would be great if there was a way to find you guys more staff to work on this. Because it's clear, you know, there's a lot of potential to do really great things, but it's just gonna take the labor to do it. So, we sympathize with you. We know that the division is, in general, understaffed. And if there's a way for that to be remedied in the short term, we'd certainly advocate for that.
Thank you.
Yes.
And, and that was recorded, Dustin.
I'm not, I'm not, this is not a pitch to hire students as interns, but-
Right. But, but also understand that there has been a student workshop generating a lot of the background material, and that is over. So, the ability to keep doing that needs staffing.
Well, and thank you for bringing up the, the students. I mean, Dustin, your class has been amazing. And, I mean, Kevin has probably marvels that, at least weekly, meeting with the students about how the product that they're producing is, you know, just superb. I mean, they really put a lot of thought in it. You've got some, an excellent class, and really been very, very helpful.
That's good.
And the leadership of, you know, you and Lou has done that.
I think I see a connection here. We have a very powerful human capital engine right next, and our plan did not talk about how can we leverage that.
Yeah.
All right. Food for thought. And with that, we are adjourned.